All right, we'll go ahead and start the Ford County Commission meeting. This will be meeting 2022-20 for July 18th. And up first is a prayer called by a pledge of allegiance, and we have Ada Bogart from John 14 Ministries Incorporated here at the prayer boards.
Father, we come to you now thanking you for this beautiful way that you blessed us with, thanking you that we live in the land of the free and help us to not take that freedom for granted, Lord, but to stand up for that which is right in your sight. And deal with commissioners and our county officials as they run the business of the county. Lord, just give them wisdom and understanding of what is needed and we do praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before us is the consent agenda, and then here we have the approval of meeting minutes 2022-19, a community development block grant semi-annual report, and we have a proclamation which is the National Day of the Cowboy. All right, so we have a representative from Dodge City Convention Visitors Bureau?
Yes.
All right.
Whereas pioneer men and women recognized as cowboys helped establish the American West. Whereas the cowboy spirit continues to infuse this country with its solid character, sound family values, and good common sense. Whereas the cowboy embodies honesty, integrity, courage, compassion, respect, a strong work ethic, and patriotism. Whereas approximately 800,000 ranchers are conducting business in all 50 states and are contributing to the economic well-being of nearly every county in the nation, making the cowboy an excellent steward of the land and its creatures. Whereas the cowboy is an American icon, cowboy tradition, and has long been part of the American landscape and culture, and today's cowboy and cowgirls continue to strive and preserve this unique element of American heritage. Whereas to recognize the American cowboy is to acknowledge the ongoing commitment of the United States to its esteemed and enduring code of conduct. Whereas the ongoing contributions made by cowboys to their communities should be recognized and encouraged.
Now therefore be resolved that Dodge City and Ford County supports the Senate of the United States in a quest to designate and celebrate the Fourth Saturday in July each year, and this year designates July 23rd, 2022, as National Day of the Cowboy, and encourages the people of Dodge City, Ford County, and the United States to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. A witness thereof, I have pair unto set my hand on this, the 18th day of July 2022.
Thank you, we appreciate you taking the proclamation. As you know, most of the time National Day of the Cowboy doesn't normally follow through Dodge City days, but this year did not. So we have created an event, and we're gonna pass out some invitations for you, but we encourage you to come help us celebrate. This year we're gonna do what we call Whisper Roundup. It's going to be a mustache pageant. We are gonna be serving ice cream and cobbler, so we encourage you to come. We do have eight contestants as of today that will be participating to be 2022's Mr. Moustache. So it's gonna be a fun event. We have Bitful Museum coming out to help us with it, and so we do encourage you guys to help join us and celebrate.
You can take some nominations from the group.
And then you can celebrate.
Cobbler and ice cream at a mustache contest, I'm telling you.
Can you even think about that? Oh, man. I'm just excited about that. Good point. What about the women?
Are you saying there's some women that can win the mustache contest?
Not one on the earth.
My wife has a good joke about that every now and then. All right. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I would second.
All right, with a motion second, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to claims for payments. This is actually $500 more than what's on the paper, so it'll be in the amount of $1,541,763.74. Anything particular to point out?
We have full on payments this time.
Yep, okay, and we had a late?
Yes. We have special check.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'd make a motion to approve the claim for payment.
I would second.
All right, with a motion second, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're at the part of the meeting where it's open to public comments. Please limit five minutes per individual, 15 minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until the next county commission meeting unless an emergency situation does exist. The microphone's open. Feel free to come forward and discuss it, anything you guys would like. All right, we'll move on. There's no unfinished business, no legal counsel, so we'll turn it over to the county administrator's report.
First item we have is the revenue mutual rate discussion.
Welcome, Pat.
Hi.
Hi, Pat.
Hello. So I have to work on the budget. Before we can do the audit, we're gonna need some... We need to do the audit to get some better numbers. But so what I did was, and I've talked to JD, I set the revenue mutual rate at seven mils for the fire district and 46 for the county, as well as you did last year. The revenue neutral rate for the county would be 43 because your valuation jumped up quite a bit. So this would just... If we don't do the 46, we can always go lower afterwards, but you can't go higher. So when once we get done with the audit and have better numbers, we get some better numbers in there for you. But I would recommend setting the hearing. I think they talked about September 19th, at 3:30. Set the hearing to 46 mils to 70 mils, and then that way Debbie can get her mailing out when she needs to. Because she needs to be notified by 20:00 in the day. I usually tell that to her.
How many missed them?
Forty-six and...
Seven.
Seven.
Which the seven would actually be a decrease from last year, the 46 is what you left last year for counties. But this isn't putting anything to stone, it's just getting the letter to go out, so.
So do you need actual of that going?
Right. Because we need to put that in the paper.
You don't need to put it in the paper yet.
I have a mailing to go out.
A mailing.
Yeah, and everybody, every taxpayer this year is gonna get, for every entity in the county, if the community college, school district's gonna send one out. Your...
Some of the townships.
Some of the townships are all gonna have R and R hearings. So on her hearing, on your sheet, if one of those entities is on your property or...
You'll get the letter.
You'll get the letter. So everybody, if Ford County does it, everybody will get one at least for Ford County.
Okay.
And whatever school district hearing. School districts are all...
Yeah.
So I would make a motion that we set those preliminary levy levels, 46 for the county, seven for the rural fire district for our notification.
I'd object to that.
Okay, we got a motion second. Any further discussion on that?
Also that the hearing date...
Yeah. So you have to set the hearing date for September 19th.
I think a separate motion for that.
Or include it if you want.
Okay, Commissioner Snook, I'm gonna amend my motion to include the hearing date for September 19th. At 3:30.
I agree.
Okay, so we still have a motion second on that. Any other discussion?
Are we gonna do both of them?
All right, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Next item is consent results, farm lease.
Okay, gentlemen, so before us we have farmers who put in for a farm lease on a section of ground the county owns. We've all probably had a chance to review it. Pretty clear, I think, on somebody came pretty heavy out of pocket to make sure they get this.
He did change that to half sections instead of a section. Any speech, sir?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to award the bid to the high bid submitted by B.E. Schneewies Inc. for the farm lease.
And I will second that. Hearing that you would second, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
All right. Next item is the KDOT Economic Development Agreement. Kansas Legislature through KSA 682314 authorized the secretary to provide funding for programs to create new jobs and encourage capital investment in Kansas by helping fund transportation initiatives to improve new businesses and encourage growth of existing businesses. This agreement is between the Secretary of Transportation, Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, the Secretary of Ford County, Kansas. A motion to approve the Kansas Department of Transportation Economic Development Agreement for Ford County.
Now, we had a letter from our legal counsel, Herb. They basically said with caution, they're trying to have us hold harmless, add KDOT to basically a whole harmless agreement. And in his feeling, he said that we should also take the same position to hold KDOT. KDOT should hold the Ford County harmless as well, since they'll be doing the work.
Were any of these changes addressed? Do you know? I don't have anything.
Is there a deadline on this? If not, we can table this to make sure that we can get this agreed upon.
I think they're gonna do the work, I think they should be equally responsible.
I would agree.
I know the only correspondence I've got is Judy, I'm gonna mess up this last name, Laura Ruth Quitz from KDOT. She replied to myself, JD, and Glenn, and Sean, and it was just, she'd have sent Glenn's letter back. There was, I went, I went and looked through it, and there wasn't anything changed. It was just Glenn's letter that they received, and she doesn't turn around and say that.
I don't think Judy's not from...
That's Glenn's.
That's Glenn's.
Oh, I'm sorry. So then, yeah, KDOT hadn't responded to that at all, then, that I've seen.
Then we need to table that. I made the motion that we table that KDOT Economic Development Agreement.
I would second your motion, Commissioner Snook. But for discussion here, I think we need to figure out what the timing is on this and whether there's a... Whether there's a deadline on it.
All right, so that's page 10. Looks like we have time.
Commissioner Snook, you wanna table this till the next meeting?
Yes. That'd be good. That would be good. We table till the next meeting. See what Glenn can get done.
I will second that as well.
Okay, so we have a motion in the seconds to table this till legal counsel can find us a solution for indemnification. So I'll go ahead and call a vote on that. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let this table.
Next item is the agreement, BNSF Railway Company Highway Rail Great Crossing Close.
Chris got the head nod.
Good afternoon. So I have this agreement from BNSF Railway to close the permanent close of Great Crossing at 128 Road. There are two pages that need to be signed by the commission on that. The first page is the, is the closure agreement, and the next one is the county street closure ordinance. And we went back and looked, and that section of 128 Road was actually vacated back in 1997. So everything south of Highway 50 between section 22 and 23 of Township 25 South and Range 22 West was vacated by a resolution 1997-40. So Township's just still been maintained and for access for landowners, but it's vacant. BNSF just needs to be signed, and then we will also send in copies of those of that resolution after the vote.
So, Chris, when they first brought this up, what you wanna call it, I had mentioned that we needed some help on that crossing at Garnett. And we'd be happy to close a couple of these if we could get them to come around and start talking to us about about improving that crossing. Where are we at on that?
So they have been talks on that. They're moving forward. They had a field check out there with BNSF and KDOT, and I was present at that. And they went over everything and laid out the plans on how they would build the crossing there. So from there, they were going forward, building the plans, and coming up with the cost on everything. And that's the last number of that.
Okay, how long ago was that?
That was back in May.
Okay. I'd like to stay on top of that.
Yes.
They're moving anywhere they want to. Thank you.
Okay, so to keep this one moving ahead. This has a file on it.
Yeah, that's...
BNSF?
BNSF's own file.
Okay.
There's a contract number.
C2.
That's the same. Yeah, the same sort of file.
So to make a motion to approve contract number, which is BF 20207189, which is an agreement with BNSF Railroad permanently close the 128 Road Great Crossing, and that's at DOT number 009083W, which is also railroad milepost 333.64.
I would second the motion.
All right, with a motion second, any further discussion?
Since counsel agrees with that, I agree with you. He's a spiritual guy. Make sure people chat me over there.
All right. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, though.
Are you ex-creed? I'm ex-creed. So in looking at ways to better utilize our equipment money, we were presented with options of doing rebuilds on motor graders. This was brought to us by Foley Equipment. They presented that. So I followed up with Murphy Tractor and see if they would do the same thing, because I have two 770G motor graders that were purchased in 2010 that are approaching 10,000 hours on them. And I thought they would be good candidates to have this procedure done on them. So Murphy's is able to do it, and they presented me an estimate. This would replace the engine with a remanned RG 37929. Replace the transmission, replace the hydraulic pumps, replace the axles, the axle stub shaft, do a complete machine inspection, have the cooling packages cleaned and tested, and then have a three-year or 5,000-hour warranty after the fact. And it would be $162,821.04 per machine. And I'd like to have that done on two, two machines for a total of $325,642.08.
Chris, what's a new machine cost?
I checked in earlier this year, and that would have been first quarter of this year, and they were at $375,000, and I was told it's only going up from there.
Right.
These were purchased...
I see on there, you... Excuse me. I see on there it's got 8,500, and of course, if all are good.
Yeah, so if all the, if all the cores in the, like, in the transmission and the pumps and stuff are good, they'll take $8,500 off that total.
Because then they're gonna resell it?
Yes.
They'll re, they'll remount it.
Yeah. But we bought these in, in 2010, and they were $215,524, like these then.
Nearly. They're approaching double of that price.
Yes, yeah. I would say now, if I, if I asked for a quote now, they would be over $40,000.
They'd be right at $40,000.
Yeah. And that's what the government rate.
They're probably sharing this also with townships out there that, you know, we don't grade for. I mean, this is a... Anyway, so Murphy's matching pretty much what Foley's doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they would, we won't take them in right away if it's got approved. They would, they would get all the parts ordered, get them in, and then they bring the machine in. It would probably be down for a month and a half, and then we'd get it back, then take the other one in. So, yeah, there will be a month, two-month downtime in there, but we won't be, we won't take it in, just like, sit there until the parts, they'll call us when they're ready to come, wrap in.
Chris, how many yards from that machine?
One of them has 9,504 hours, and the other one has 9,625 hours.
And really, these are like 12 years old?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the warranty is three years or 5,000 hours?
Correct. So we'll hit the three years.
Yeah, before the block. Okay. I was trying to math that out.
Yeah. So I just, I figured that if we could, you know, if prices stay like that for a couple of years, well, I've got some, I've also got some caterpillars that we could do this to with Foley's next year and just try to stretch out our dollars to get a little, you know. I've, Gray County's done this with a couple of theirs, and they said they're, it's like a brand new machine.
Yeah, I, I really think this is a pretty wise option myself. Now, when they rebuild that, you're talking about the motor, transmission, hydraulic pumps. What about the blade joints?
So they'll go through and re shim and clean up the circle and all of that, even the joint up front.
Right.
Ford, they'll go through and redo all that as well.
Is that included in this price then, or is that...
That's, yeah, it should be included under...
Machine inspection.
Well, yeah, the machine inspection just has a, doesn't have a parts list.
Right.
Price, it has a labor. But he did tell me they would go through and, and make sure the circle was all, put shims in, everything like that. We have been having some issues with one of these John Deere's. It's been some oil getting into the transmission, or some other fluids getting into the transmission. It gets, it gets filled up, and we cannot pinpoint where it's coming from. So a new engine, new transmission in that one will help me.
So you've already got that big, be the first one out?
Yeah.
Is this something that you wanna do two a year, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'd like to do, I'd like to do two. Foley's, I know their price was just a little bit higher from what they've told me. So it's, but it's in the same ballpark, that $175,000 range. So if prices on equipment, if they stay high right now, then, yeah, I could, I'd like to keep doing this and redoing some of our older machines. Another benefit of this is we don't have to deal with DEF with Tier 4 engines on these older machines. So any new machine we buy will be using DEF with Tier 4 engines.
Well, that's a blessing, I can take that. DEF is, is, you know, that's a good deal.
I'd make a motion to approve the estimate for Murphy Tractor Equipment to rebuild the John Deere 770 motor graders.
I second that.
Okay, with a motion second, any further discussion?
Do you wanna make that a do not exceed amount on, on those, or?
I think it's a questionable item.
Right. Yeah. Hold them to the quote.
Well, that's what I gave you.
So what happens? What happens? We gotta, they get in there, start the inspections, they're like, oh, we got some other major problem here.
I, I think if they find something major beyond that, they're gonna have to come back and talk to me and bring me that quote, we have to come back and...
Do that anyway.
Yeah.
If you put a do not exceed on there, I guess we can do that.
Yeah, I, I think if, I'd like to hold them to this, and then if they try to come up, I don't want them to just pick something and then bill us and say, well, this is what we found. So I think if we hold them to this, and they, they find something above and beyond, then they need to bring me another quote, and I would present it to the commission again.
So I would amend my motion to include a do not exceed amount. Do you mind if we just make that equal $163,000?
Times two.
Times two, yes.
So 326?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's important or not, but tell them 163. tell them 163 each machine.
Yes. Yeah.
So we don't go over on one and then have less for the other.
Yes.
Got it?
All right, so that was a motion. Mr. Schluck, you still want to second that?
I certainly do.
All right, so with the motion seconded, I'll call a vote now. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is planning a zoning conditional use permit.
Good afternoon.
I have a question.
Before you guys, you should have resolution number 202226. What this resolution is, is for a conditional use permit in development plan for the purpose of a group home for special needs adults located at 10949104 Road. On June 22nd, 2022, the zoning board held a public hearing for the zoning case number 2022-04 to consider the conditional use permit and application in development plan submitted by Touch of Hope for the purpose of establishing the group home. The Port County Zoning Board considered the application and development plan. When the members present, there was four in favor and several opposed to recommend to, to the Board of County Commissioners for the approval of this. The following condition is the group home shall meet all federal, state, and local regulations. No notice, the required notice was given in statutory 14-day protest period. In lack to no written protest, propose conditional use permit in the development plan in the 50th county court. Have any questions? Group home will hold about three to four special needs adults. They're keeping it low. As I said in my case, there was ten churches that came together to build this group home. And they already know the people that want to have it here.
You said they already know the people?
Apparently, there are church members.
Okay.
And staff identified as well?
Yes, they, they do have some staff identified. They're trying to get all the paperwork to get the staff following.
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-26, is that right? As recommended by our zoning director.
All right, I'll second that. Motion seconded, any further discussion? Carry it down, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
That was 26.
Next item we have, a Santa Fe Trail Community Corrections Juvenile Services Prevention Program Report. I have a question. Melissa just left. See ya, Melissa.
Okay, so, uh, what I have before you is our fourth quarter Juvenile Services Prevention Program Report. This was sent to you as well as a summary as to the content of it. I know there's a lot of numbers and it's kind of a confusing report, but just to touch on the highlights, when it refers to our secondary population and talking about our divert program, which is our germsy program. And then the tertiary population refers to a combination of both our in-house schools as well as our in-depth diversion program. So the cumulative numbers are a combination of those two programs together. So, uh, because this is our fourth quarter report to summarize is the context that you've had with youth in the community for the year. And so our goal was 125 youth to be served through these programs, but we've actually served 283.
True.
So we surpassed our, our goals for the year. But this has already been reviewed and presented to the advisory board last week. And so, um, per KDC policy, this report has to also be approved. By the chair of the Senate. Or by the board representative, by the chair of the Senate.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the Santa Fe Trail Community Corrections Juvenile Services Fiscal Year 22 Prevention Program Report.
I'll second that.
I second.
All right, with the motion seconded, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Sheriff's Department Control Vehicle Sale Options.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, how are you?
Off the tire.
Long day.
Yeah. Well, a few things here for you. So we had a discussion. Been working this out with input, our used vehicles on purple ways. And we had an incident here a couple months ago where we sold one of them outright to St. Louisville. And another agency, uh, just reached out to us, acquiring, uh, our vehicles. And they wanted me to have a second agency, wanted to do the same thing.
Are these in county or out of county?
Out of county.
Okay.
Obviously, due to the shortage, the crisis that everybody's in right now, our old stuff has become valuable.
Yeah.
So I'll just, uh, I guess ask for your blessings to allow us the opportunity to obviously do what's best for our county dollars. Getting rid of the vehicles. Give them the opportunity to know what we have, and if they want to come down and look at the, the vehicles that we're looking at, uh, getting off that part of our fleet, then, uh, obviously make a decent offer to them. Kelly Blue Book, and we're trying, trying to weigh the price ranges right now between Kelly Blue Book and what's selling on the auction sites. Obviously, we're trying to get as much as we can out of it, but get in the same sense if you know somebody else that's in need or anything.
What, uh, what are the vehicles you're getting rid of?
Uh, I've got a Dodge Charger. Two of the Ford, three, three of the Ford PPVs, the Explorers. And I have a, an old half-ton Dodge pickup. I recall what year that Dodge was. She's been hanging on there for...
Four-wheel drive?
Yeah, I meant it's handy for winter and...
Moving cattle?
Yes.
Trailers?
Not for much use, but I guess it'd hang around town, and it, it'll fit the need for somebody. Like I said, what we have, and some of these other smaller communities don't have access to, I hope that that will be better, so. But I'd just like to give them the opportunity to at least look at what we have and afford them.
So that's five vehicles?
I would say four for sure.
So the Charger, three Explorers?
Yes.
Just talk about the Ram?
And the Ram, yes. The Ram for sure, yes. Uh, I might keep one of the Ford Explorers.
Okay.
Just so we let that open.
Sure.
So, uh...
And you have something else in mind that you're going after?
I rented a lot of, uh, things last week that popped up. So last week, I actually have bought two cars. Uh, we stumbled into a government site. I couldn't believe it. We bought two 2016 Chevy Impalas last week, one with 6,000 miles and one with just a little under 12,000, for $8,000 apiece. So, uh, it's like, they're clean. We drove to Springfield, Missouri, picked them up, and got just under 30 miles to gallon. So I'm needing them for civil process.
Okay.
So the thing with that, I pay for them out of my process fee account, so it didn't affect anything on the budget, county-wise or anything, so. We use that with fuel. We're just starting to reassessing our expenses in-house more. Obviously, we're in short of fuel, uh, the way the costs are right now. Those Fords that we're currently using, we're running anywhere from nine to eleven miles to gallon. So they're in decent shape yet. If I can sell them to another law enforcement agency for law enforcement purposes, get rid of them, put these cars back in the fleet for civil process. I mean, they're not out of stock in cars.
Right.
So, uh, hopefully I get three times the value for fuel.
Right.
And save, so that's my thought on that. And then again, like I said, we get your blessed blessing to sell these and put that money back in the county's general fund. And then thirdly, just this morning, the same company that we've been working with, that we bought from them in the years in the past, uh, was made aware of the 2016 Dodge Ram 3500. Four-wheel drive, automatic, floor, uh, it's clean, 85,000 miles. They can pick it up for 35,000, so they should be impressed on that for today. But it's a two-day window. It's got a five-seven inch on it. Not a good engine, same one we use in, in the Chargers.
Mm-hmm.
Phil, most questions, your friends of those vehicles, maybe you ought to rest yourself. That sounds conceit to me.
Well, I'm not going to dispute the price. It was a good price, so I didn't let it go by.
Bless your heart.
I wanted to...
I'm just trying to be, I just try to be a smiley. I want you to know I want sleep, and so...
We, we drove to give, because I wasn't happy, and I wasn't pleased with the delivery fees they wanted to charge, so...
Is that over three?
It was fucking 3,000, but they thought, they thought it charges, so, uh, we did it for 300. We had to go to Wichita anyway to drop the car off, so we just continued, we just made one day trip out of it, drove down, picked them up, came back. So we saved money on that venture as well. So I guess I'm asking for permission. I guess I get three different things here, permission on itself. Everything, it's just kind of snowballed the last couple of days. This is, this was nothing in planning, it just, I got an email, JD got an email, next thing I know JD's sending me an email and realized it's the same one. Well, it doesn't hurt to look into it at least, make some inquiries. Had a lot of phone calls back and forth last week. Pictures, verification on some of the information on their vehicles. They're not great, so...
So you...
As I said, I'm still, still trying to be the steward of the taxpayers' money here. Again, I want to make sure we're running efficiently as well.
So tell me about the, the 2016 Chevy Impala you just bought. Do, you don't need action from us on that, correct? Because that's, it's a done deal, I do your civil process.
Yep, those are done.
So when you're talking about the Dodge Charger, the two, possibly three Explorers?
Yeah.
And the Ram?
So I guess to clarify, if I can just get like a motion allowing the sheriff the opportunity to explore methods, uh, communicate with county admin on the sale of vehicles. And we kind of roll on the same page.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a shot at this.
Well, what, so let's talk about the 2016 2500.
Can we do this for...
But you need that as well, right?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
But that's something you found?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So I would make a motion to authorize the sheriff to negotiate a private treaty on, uh, sale of up to five vehicles.
I would second that.
Okay.
Did you hear me say?
Yeah.
I second that?
We got you. Okay, so we got a motion in seconds to authorize a private treaty up to five vehicles and explore the options that are out there. I'll go ahead and call a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then I would make a motion to authorize the purchase of the 2016 Dodge Ram 3500.
25? 3500.
35. Okay.
Oh, that's...
I second that also.
Okay, so...
Forward the amount was, Sheriff?
35,000.
35,5? And there, now there'll be, uh, there will be delivered to Phoenix, because I'm not going to drive to Phoenix, Arizona. 35,000. And then he's, he's thinking, I mean, he figured it'd be under $2,000 number. He bought maybe 13,000. He had a car delivered last week from New Mexico, I have to line up. He just should take the shot in the dark away of the, in the past, or which will have to eat that. Unless somebody here must drive to Phoenix and fly and drive it back.
Do you want, uh, do you want that amount put into the motion, or do you want...
Just the 35,000 plus, uh, delivery fee?
I'd make that one. I would amend my motion to authorize the purchase of the $2,016 Dodge Ram 3500 for 35,000 dollars plus delivery.
I second that.
All right, I'll call a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So a quick backstory on that, I don't know if you called that, the speed. Rego, when he took over to landfill, he had a vehicle that needed replaced, really bad. So I transferred our vehicle to Rego. It was better suited for what he needed. It's got a flatbed on it and everything. I already went through the vehicle, it's a writing order, kind of like Elliot and some of the others who've been transferring vehicles to, so. You thought he won the lottery, dealer for good last Monday. Picked up their fuel tanks and everything out, they're using it to go at the fuel to fill up their equipment, so. We've got the landfill taking care of our vehicle, so.
Nice.
Uh, we're just, that's how this pickup come up, we're just in the midst of backfilling right now. So that takes care of that. Again, like I said on the pickup, I'll contact him this evening, uh, just to make sure it's, it's one of those first in, first out. I'll let him know that we got the blessing here to at least get our name on that pickup, try to get that done. And, uh, last item that I need, I need permission. We, as COVID goes and expenses, we had a hiccup on upfitting one of our vehicles. We took a K9 vehicle down to change the equipment over, uh, the cage, the door popper and air conditioning unit for the, the K9. Her won't fit in the new rack.
Oh, wow.
So, uh...
What, what, did you have a different vehicle? Is that what you're swapping out?
It's the make and model's what hurt me.
Gosh.
Find that, you press.
You need a different cage, then?
I could buy a new, a new unit, and it's...
Eight grand?
It's literally around that. It is, it is close to that. So I guess if I could, uh, potentially need permission to buy that, I'm stuck.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, this literally, it was completely out of my control, and again, that came in just before last day. So I'm kind of at the mercy of...
Which vehicle is that one going in?
It's one of the Tahu's, yeah.
Okay.
And then one of the big shitty Tahu's. We already got it up there. Uh, it was one of those, we could wait and do it later, but the problem I run into now, obviously, expense is going to go up because we're going to have it out on the road. We're going to have to take it back in, tear everything out, put it in. It just makes no sense. I can keep him in the current, uh, we've got an old rack, one of the old ones that I've got him in driving right now. I don't want to play the game, drive the cars back and forth. And that, that in and of itself is expensive.
Okay, so for clarification, you keep the old cage? Or you don't? It goes with the vehicle?
I'll, I'll negotiate that to somebody else to buy it, if they've got a right to this, because it's not as fitting like we have.
Okay.
Hopefully find somebody that can buy that. Hasn't been good last week.
So help me out with your action item here. You're asking for a...
Permission to purchase a K9 cage unit for a new Tahoe. K9 kennel. And just, uh, clarification, the, uh, vehicle line that we did for this year was still well within. And just, uh, for clarification, the, uh, vehicle line that we did for this year was still well within. Well under for the year. Even with the big guy.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to allow the sheriff to go out to purchase a K-nine cage unit for the Tahoe.
I would second.
All right, with the motion seconded, any further discussion on that? Here we go, and I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Sorry, your day's been like an ass.
Well, yeah, it is what it is. I'm just thinking COVID's kind of weighing all these excuses here to go with prices and everything, but. I'm just reassessing everything we do on a daily basis right now for efficiency. Unfortunately, we're getting pinched on some items.
Yeah.
Continue to work out, but we're getting there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
I'm November nine, upcoming meetings. CFAB Special Meeting, Thursday, July twenty-first, six thirty PM, City Commission Chambers. National Association of Calis, NACO Annual Conference Exposition, July twenty-first through twenty-fourth. Gaylord Rockies Resort, Convention Center, Adams, Kelly, Aurora, Colorado. Joint Public Hearing, Santa Fe Depot, August first at five thirty PM. Canvas Votes, August eighth at nine AM. If I have nothing further.
Sean, uh, will you be able to attend that CFAB meeting?
Yes.
If you would. I'm not gonna be able to be there, so I don't know how Commissioner Snook is feeling there or whatever, but.
I don't know what that is.
Uh, it'll be July. This Thursday, Commissioner Snook.
I thought I'd be at this meeting, but I didn't feel very good.
I understand.
Okay.
You'll feel better soon.
I would hope.
Okay, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
With the motion seconded, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.